Okay. He's raising his finger like, wait a minute. There he goes.
We are live.
Okay. Hello, everyone. My name is Suzanne Ryan, Chairman of the Zoning Board of Appeals. A call to order the meeting at 7:00. And the roll call is myself, Suzanne Ryan, Chair; Audrey Klein, Vice Chair; Sarah Silk, Clerk; Kate McMahon is a voting member; Jody Pearson is a voting member. So the ones that I just named are all voting members. Alternates are Sabette Strowman and Chuck Sumner. And they are alternates not voting on this hearing. The first order of business is a quick review of the minutes of September 26. Anybody see anything that needs to be corrected or changed? Are you willing? Go ahead, Sarah.
If you look underneath Roman numeral two, line two, it said, "Board can feel passionate." It was supposed to say, "Board can feel compassion."
Both.
Good catch.
Yes. We don't want any risque boards.
Any other corrections? Seeing none, I entertain a motion to accept the minutes as amended.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
I didn't hear anybody say second. Okay. I made the motion. Audrey did the second.
The minutes of October 7th. Any additions, corrections?
There's just an error. We had talked-
Where are you on it?
Underneath Roman numeral three. And it says, "ZBA meeting scheduled October 23rd, November 18, and December 2nd," with double asterisks. And then the double asterisk note says, "Above noted meetings include a site visit scheduled for 6:30 p.m. prior to the regularly scheduled meeting at the Great Hall, Wolfboro Town Hall, at 7:00 p.m." And we had discussed at the last meeting that the site visits needed to revert to the winter time of 4:30s.
Yeah, they know that now.
Yeah. So, anyway.
What happened partly is, usually it changes with daylight savings. This is a meeting before daylight savings. This is an unscheduled meeting. So we ran into a darkened time at 6:30.
Yeah.
Normally, we wouldn't be having a meeting this time of the month. It would have been the first Monday of the month.
Right.
And November, I'm trying to explain it to Kate. November would have been on daylight savings at 4:30. So there was, this is just because we rescheduled this meeting.
Okay.
It collided with the darkness of the time of day.
The correction still needs to be made to change it from 6:30 to 4:30 for at least November and December, and probably take the asterisks off of that October 23rd because that ship has sailed.
All right. We'll be talking about these times. Please remind me at the end of the meeting. You should have all gotten any-
I've got to talk about it under rules of procedure. I've made a note already.
All right. You all should have gotten an email from Shawna about times.
Nope.
All right. We'll be talking about it at the end of the meeting. Can I have a motion to accept the minutes as noted, corrected?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. I'm going to leave that face up so I remember to do that. Okay. So our clerk can't give a site visit report because she couldn't find the site. Audrey, would you give us a review of what you saw?
Yes. I was there. Jody Pearson was there. And Chuck was there, along with the owner, the neighbor, and another couple of neighbors. And we looked at the site, and we asked a few questions. And that was about it.
Did you get to see where the boundary lines were for the lot?
No.
No?
No, there was no marking for the boundary lines.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. I'm going to open the public hearing, and I would like to remind the board that this is an application for a variance to a side setback for a 50 by 40 barn building. And the applicant, please, you're welcome to come up. And the process that we like to use is read from, talk into the microphone because the acoustics are terrible here. If you'd read from your application, one through five. That way, you don't have to add lib, and it will be heard by the public and will be in the record.
I don't have the application because I changed all the paperwork, and she was going to get me a copy.
Follow this. I think that starts right there. Yeah, start right here.
I'm Steve Toomey, contractor for Tom Shaughnessy. He's the property owner. So this is the variance request. The undersigned hereby request a variance from Article, I'm not sure what that is, and asks that said terms of the zoning ordinance be waived to add onto the existing barn space a 40 by 50 barn. The undersigned alleges that the following circumstances exist to support this variance request. The variance will not be contrary to the public interest because this is a very remote location at Mountain View Flying Community, and the barn sits alongside this remote location. The spirit of the ordinance is observed because this is a proposed expansion to an existing barn. Substantial justice is done because the expansion to this barn can only be attached to the existing barn because of the property line and the wetlands at the rear. The values of the surrounding properties will not be diminished because this expansion will increase the value of the neighboring homes.
He didn't get all the way, did he? Where'd he start? Right here?
Yes.
Get to do the next page.
Oh, keep going. Okay.
Number five, I think.
Number five. Literal enforcement of the provisions of the ordinance would result in unnecessary hardship because the special conditions of this property that distinguish it from other properties in the area are as follows. This is a very remote area. This addition is in keeping with the other buildings here. Use A or B. A, owing to the special conditions of the property set forth above that distinguishes it from other properties in the area. I, no fair or substantial relationship exists between the purposes of the ordinance applicable to the application and the specific application of that provision to the property because the proposed expansion to the existing barn. Down at B, owing to the special condition set forth above, the property cannot reasonably be used in strict conformance with the ordinance, and a variance is therefore necessary to enable a reasonable use of it because it is the most practical space to add on to the existing barn.
Okay, thank you. Can I have that back?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, board. Board members, any questions from the applicant?
Yes.
Go ahead, Kate. Speak up.
Yes. I just have a question.
Get to put it right in your mouth.
Thank you. When I got up Haynes Hill Road to 302, the name on the mailbox was Marshall.
Correct.
Is that one of your names, Mr. Shaughnessy?
That was the previous owner of the property.
Previous owner, okay. And then the other question is, when I looked at the property and the barn, is the grassy runway that you point out in the sketch, is that perpendicular to Haynes Hill Road? Because I did see a grassy, oh, okay. Great. I just wanted to check that out. Thank you.
What was the first question?
Different name on the mailbox.
Oh.
Previous owner.
We were marshaling you all there for the meeting, so.
Anyone else? Any questions? Sarah?
Yes, okay. Referring to this drone shot, or whatever it is. I had trouble trying to interpret what these lines indicate here. It looks, according to the application, that you're doubling the size of the building, 40 by 50, with another 40 by 50. But I don't understand what all these lines are here, and I'm not quite certain where the existing building actually ends.
Okay. So this square is the building. This is the roofline pitched this way and this way. This is the proposed pitch this way and this way. And this is a triangle. We're calling a cricket, a big cricket, which these are two valleys here and there.
Right.
And two verticals way down. Both of them.
So this is 50 by 40, and then?
This is 50 by 40.
So what's this in here?
This is an existing pump out. This building on that side.
Which is included in that 50 by 40 measurement? Or in addition to?
Well, the 50 by, 40 by 50 is to this line here, which is to the side of this barn. This barn here is 40 by 50. And this comes over, I believe it's called a 10 by 28. You can see that for air.
So it is a structure in here, this 10 by 28, or whatever it is. So in reality, the building is more like 60 feet, not total.
Well, it'd be, yeah, that building. Yeah. That building is 40, 50 feet. That's 60 feet.
Okay, let's look at this drawing here. This is your 40 feet. This is your 50 feet. And someplace in here is that other 10 feet?
Correct.
So why is it not included in your measurements?
I spaced it.
Oh. Okay.
But all it does, it doesn't change the width.
The 40-foot measurement. So when this is all said and done, it's 110 rather than 50 and 60?
Yeah, this is 10.
Okay, so rather be in 100, it's actually 110 feet. Okay, thank you. Okay, to add to Sarah's question. So we know the barn that is there is 40 by 50. That's what the tax card said. So total square footage, I don't care if it's empty space or filled space, what is the footprints of the foundation, 40 by 50, or something else?
40 by 110.
I don't care about that. I want to know what's proposed.
Oh, 40 by 50. 1000.
So it is, okay.
So it's essentially, Suzanne, the existing part is 40 by 60, and the proposed addition is the 40 by 50. And that's how we end up with 40 by 110. Okay. And I have one other question, Suzanne?
Yeah, well, hang on a second. Keep that thought. I have on the tax card 50 by 42.
Maybe that's with the overhangs?
That's existing? Are you saying existing is that?
Hmm?
Existing is that, right? Is that what you're saying? Existing, what's there? Yeah, right there.
We have a foundation certification for what's there.
And what's that?
Well, it doesn't have any numbers. It just has a scale. So I can't tell you. But it appears to show the setback, which also doesn't have a number on it. I don't know whether this is, when this was copied, whether this piece of paper was the same as the original. Otherwise, I can't tell whether the scale's correct.
Well, I'm just, I'm interested in the addition. Because what's there is there.
I know, but if it lines up, then you have the setback. You should be able to see the setbacks on here, if it's the same width, which I think is sounding like it may be.
Go ahead, Sarah. I have a question.
It's sort of connecting on to what Audrey just said. You also have a building envelope line on here, which I assume has to do with the setback from the very poorly drained soil in the back there. And if this extends an extra 10 feet, if this drawing here is correct, then it probably is getting into that building, outside that building envelope, if it's an additional 10 feet. We don't know that because we don't have adequate measurements and boundary points.
And that was going to be one of my questions, is the setback is 25 feet, but what, are they going right up to the line? Or what, how many feet are they going into the 25 feet?
And I have another question.
Sarah, is that, is that, is that-
True.
-what we're trying to get at?
We should make a list because these are things we need to, can somebody write these down? Because these are things that they need to come back to us with.
Okay. Well, if we get the answer to one question at a time, maybe we can eliminate the list of questions.
Well, without a scaled drawing, what difference does it make what they say they're going in? We don't, they don't know, we don't know.
Well, because if we're to approve this, we need to say the measurements of the addition-
True.
-for the building inspector. And he has to know how many feet inside the setback they're going.
I get that.
And I don't know what it is. Go ahead.
I think number one is, we don't have a scaled drawing. Number two is, we need measurements that reflect the 110 feet. And third, is it 40, or is it 42 feet? And I have a question as to what is considered the side setback, the front setback, and the rear setback on this particular piece of property?
So I think if, I think if you look at the historic paperwork, the house was built out by the road, so the road is the front. So these would be-
Where's the road on here?
To your right.
What road are you talking about?
To your right.
Are you talking about Haynes Hill Road?
Yeah, that's the property front. So these would be sides. And then there would be a rear. The short side would be a rear setback.
Towards the neighbor's house.
Yeah.
Correct, okay.
But that's already there, right?
Yep.
Audrey, where's Haynes Hill on this? Way over here.
It's to your right.
To the right on that. Way down here.
Way down here.
It's perpendicular to the grass runway.
Yeah. It seems like we had a tax map someplace in our packet. Maybe not. I thought I saw one. That would be helpful to orient it. The other question is, where is the wetland setback?
And we need measurements from the proposed addition to all of these setbacks.
Right. This, this foundation as-built plan for the existing hangar or barn was done by Donald Wright, and I believe that one of the local surveyors purchased his proper, his files. So you'll be able to find who's got this, and they can go off of this and prepare what you need, I think. It's either Norway Plains or White Mountain, one of the local surveyors.
Will that be available when I come in to get?
This is in the file. I can leave it on top of, it's in the building file. I'll leave it on top.
Okay, it sounds like we're not ready to make an approval until we get some numbers.
Yeah. Oh, also, I guess I have a question about the right-of-ways and the deeds. I'd like to have some, some, something to say that those are in place.
What?
The right-of-way, there's a right-of-way in front of where we're looking, and there's a deeded right-of-way over that to the runway, which is, do they have a deed to use the runway? And to me, this is important to the, to the variance criteria.
Okay. Okay. So it sounds like, from what I'm hearing from the questions, well, the public hearing is open. Is there anyone in the public that would like to address either for the applicant or opposed to the applicant's request? Okay.
Suzanne, have we heard from any of the others?
I'll show it right here.
No, if you haven't got anything, then we haven't. Okay, so what we're going to have to do is continue this hearing. And Sarah wrote a list of things, questions that we have.
I wrote two lists, one for him and one for Secretary-
You got a list for yourself?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
This is in person. I've got it.
Okay, so our next-
It's not like my printing is any better. I'm sorry.
Our next meeting is October 23rd.
No, that's today.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm looking at the minutes here. November 18th, after the election.
Right. November 18th. That'll give you some time to get in touch with that person and get it done.
So we'll be on that schedule?
That's what, yeah, Sarah, what is it?
Is it possible to also schedule a 4:30 viewing of this property at that time?
Well, that will, yes, because you were supposed to have gotten an email from Shawna saying, "heads up, how about a 4:30 viewing and a 6:00 meeting?" So we'll talk about that after. Let's get this motion underway. I would make a motion to continue the hearing for Thomas Shaughnessy, 302 Haynes Hill Road, case number 11V24, for a variance on Chapter 175, 124A2 for a barn building side yard setback. And they've been given, I believe, three or four questions that they'll need to answer at our next meeting, and I would continue it to November 18th.
Can I add one thing to that list, is maybe to have things staked out there better? Yeah, I was planning on doing that. Okay. There are cones. We've got stakes. Yeah, I know. Yeah.
Okay.
That's fine.
With a site viewing at 4:30.
Can I, can I just add that to your list? Oh, I'll print it. It's okay, thank you.
Site visit at 4:30.
And a meeting time at 7:00.
6:00.
You want to meet at 6:00?
6:00.
I may not be able to be here, but that's neither here nor there. You have alternates.
Well, it is important, but, all right. So the motion is, you heard, I hope the tape recorder heard it, to November 18th, site visit at 4:30. We can hammer out the meeting time, I guess.
No, we need to have it in the motion.
6:00.
Usually we meet at 7:00.
Well, no, if I can't make it, I can't make it. Doesn't matter whether it's 6:00 or 7:00.
How about 5:00, right after the site visit?
I have actually paid for a work meeting that night, maybe, so, no.
Wait a minute, we could, she's asking me something.
In the microphone, please.
Usually we meet at 7:00. If we meet, if we meet at 4:30, that's, we'll get back after 5:00 and then go home and have dinner and come back.
Well, because that's the whole point of moving the meeting down an hour.
Oh.
So we come from the site visit pretty much right here, grab a cup of coffee and come here, instead of going home and coming back and going home and coming back.
Okay.
All right, so 6:00, we'll try that. It'll be an experiment. 4:30 site visit, 6:00.
So do we have, do we have the TV at 6:00?
Well, if we don't, we don't. We'll have a tape recorder.
Yeah.
Do I get a second to that motion?
I'll give you a second. Did you want to check with-
Not now.
The TV person? Okay.
Do I get a second to the motion?
Yes.
Sarah seconded. Any discussion? I think we've discussed it. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? No one's opposed? No one's abstaining? So there you have it. We've continued the meeting until 18th, November 18th.
All right.
6:00.
Thank you for your time.
Madam Chair, could I ask you one quick question? I don't see it on the agenda, but under new business, can we address the latest copy from Sabette for our rules of procedure, so we can move forward with that?
If anyone brought it with them. I didn't.
I did.
I didn't.
Because I had four changes.
Well, I thought, I thought we left off that Audrey was going to get something on her schedule thing that she was working on. I was going to get something, which I did, on alternates. And, and we were going to ask Kate to do the editing.
For the-
Proofreading.
Proofreading.
Okay. On page two, there was a note to revisit the alternates. On page four, it was Audrey rewriting the section.
All right, the minutes say that.
Yeah.
What was left over to be done.
Okay, I have some changes. If Sabette has her copy?
If Sabette has her copy? Oh, okay.
I don't have my computer with me. I mean, we could still work on it if everybody wants...
Well, I haven't... I'm not prepared to do that.
These are very simple little things. I think Sabette could just take a note.
Sure, I mean, I can revise it and send the new revision to Kate.
How big of a change is it?
They're very little. I had four little bitty things.
Sure, you know what?
Three little bitty things.
I'll write it down. Let me stop one minute. I'll write it down and then Kate, I will send you this copy to proofread. So we're working from the same copy.
Okay.
Okay, go ahead.
On page 5, under Roman numeral 10, public notice. Number 1, it says, "Public notice of public hearings and site visits on each application be given to the Granite State News," blah, 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 blah. And I think someplace in there, we need to put parentheses, 4:30 October to March and 6:30 April to September. Just so that's clear.
I think we should leave it open to the...
Well, how did that work out for us this time?
This was just a this time. If we say it in there, then we have to... If we need to change it for some, we have to waive that regulation.
It should just perhaps say daylight savings time will reflect earliest site visits and not get into the time that the meeting starts.
I don't think it even has to be in there.
I don't think so either.
I mean, we advertise the site visits per the program we've got.
Well, the thing of it is, is staff doesn't know that, so...
Well, I would think getting that information to staff, there's a better way than putting it in there.
I don't care.
There's no doubt if it's in there.
You don't want it in there? Let's just make some decision. If you don't want it in there, I don't care.
I don't want it in there.
I don't want it in there either.
Okay. I don't want to keep looking in the dark.
It doesn't mean that anything isn't subject to change for time.
Yeah, but if we have it in there, we have to waive it. And then we have to go through the waiving procedure.
Exactly.
On page 7...
Okay, so we're scratching that whole thing?
I guess so.
Okay.
On page 7, number 13, decisions. Three lines down. It talks about 90 days of receipt of application and shall approve, approve with conditions or deny. That's fine, but at the... The other copy we had, it said they shall approve, approve with conditions or deny this application.
Okay.
I don't know whether you dropped it because you thought it was redundant? Because the word "application" is earlier in the sentence?
I think Kate can shush this out as to whether that makes sense or not from a proofreading standpoint.
Okay, well, Kate didn't write it, Sabette did.
I can change it, send it back to Kate, no problem.
I don't know the answer, so...
I think the point of mentioning approve or disapprove was the point was "and with conditions." A few years back, there were board members that didn't know you could put conditions on an approval.
Right, but I don't think that was the question. The question was whether the word "application" should be in there twice.
At the end of the sentence, up until this very version, it said, "or deny the application." And "the application" was dropped. And I don't see that crossed off as a change in my last one. I was just asking about that. And then on number 2 underneath there, it was inserted, they're talking about notices given to the various boards. It said, "Said notice shall contain the same information as the public notice and shall be made on forms provided for this purpose." I don't know where "shall be made on forms provided for this purpose" came from, because we don't have forms.
Well, that's the next step. We will be doing forms.
So you're gonna include it even prior to...
I don't have to come back and amend those to add the word "and forms." Just the forms will be next step.
Okay. And the last one was on page 9. And it was under, it's a new number, is 21 under waivers. And after that, in our version that we had the last time, there was a section called Rules of the Zoning Board of Adjustment. And there was three separate items underneath that, and that's been dropped. And I didn't show that we had crossed that off. I showed that we had corrected something to 3 instead of 4 members. So I'm not sure.
The rules got moved to the beginning of the document.
Yeah, they got moved somewhere, didn't they?
To the beginning of the document, where it says rules of procedure. And then we did something with the other three, which I can't tell you off the top of my head. But I think they were redundant. Or we put them up front too, also.
We'll see if I can find it.
Should be right on the title page. I think we said, well, these are the rules of procedure. Let's put that first. Up at the top.
Okay, okay, I see that, thank you, Audrey.
You're welcome.
Under Roman numeral 1. And then under Roman numeral 2. And I don't know what happened to number 3.
I think it was redundant. What does it say?
It was probably redundant because it had to do with waiver.
Yeah.
Right, and there's a separate section for waiver, yeah.
Thank you. Okay.
Kate.
And then on page number 10, it shows that it was amended in 2016, 2019. And then it said 7/25/25. And I think it's just a little typo. I think it's supposed to be 24, because we did it in July of this year.
Always thinking ahead.
But anyway. Well, I only went through it, everything, because I thought we were talking about it tonight.
Can I borrow yours? Kate, can I ask Kate a question? Kate, since those were two really simple things, can you just do them without me changing it? Or do you want me to still change it and send it to you? There was just... The first change was number...
I got them.
You got them? Okay, then I'm not gonna...
Okay, I had the thing on alternates. Let's see where it is in this. Anybody help me out here?
I think it's on page 3. I just put that away.
It's also in the minutes, because you read it into the minutes.
I didn't. It's not the whole thing. It's pretty close to it. But I'm looking for what it is currently, where we had... Where did we address alternates?
The thing about alternates is actually on page 2. It's under the new Roman numeral 4, number 3.
Let's carry it over to the next page.
So I'll need somebody to read what we did. And then Suzanne to read what she's suggesting, since I don't have a copy of that.
I've got it right here in Sabette, you know, the trustee handbook. You go to page Roman numeral 1, page 3. I guess that's a Roman number.
Can we have what we have read first? And then you can read what you're suggesting?
What we have is...
Do you want to look at this quick?
The Wolf Rose ZBA consists of five regular members who shall be elected, blah, 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 blah. Two, the Wolf Rose ZBA may appoint up to five alternates members for a term of three years each, which will be staggered. Three, alternates who are not activated to fill the seat of an absent or recused member or who have not been appointed by the chair to temporarily fill it.
You're not on the latest one that she has. Yours is not the same as the one that she just gave me.
I'm using the one that Kate had. Kate, is that the latest one?
I can't tell you.
I don't think so.
That's in a different section now.
Something different here.
Okay. So... This is the latest one.
Yeah.
Thank you. And Kate may not have that one.
You know, I have a suggestion. If we still gotta come back to Audrey's part later, let's hold yours till later, when we all have our copies in front of us.
Well, I would like to make a motion not to include that itinerary or list, or whatever you want to call it, in the rules of procedure. That was how our terms are staggered. That doesn't need to be in the rules of procedure. We spell out how our terms are staggered and when we get sworn in. But that list, that you have, that chart, that doesn't need to be in here. That chart belongs in two offices downstairs. It doesn't need to be in the rules of procedure.
Well, okay, so you're making that suggestion. If we wait, we can think about what you're saying. Because I just haven't had a chance to think about whether it should be in there.
Well, I'd like to move it along. I'd like to move it along.
I would like to think about it.
Yeah, I think we should do both at the same time. Because I don't have my copy in front of me. And I mean, we're all in different places with this. We didn't come prepared.
Well, I don't have anything in front of me either, so...
Yeah, so we still can't finalize.
Everything that we just did, Sabette will keep a note. You're not gonna send it out to anybody.
Kate's got these changes from Sarah. And we'll circle back and do yours and Audrey's. Would you like to plan on that at the next meeting?
And, and what you just took notes on.
Right, those were Sarah's. And Kate's got them.
So we'll do the three things at the next meeting.
Yes.
So I will try to bring what I've got written out and a copy for everybody when I propose what I'm gonna propose. And Suzanne, I'd like, if possible, get a copy of what you're going to propose.
Well, it's right here in your handbook. And it's right in the minutes. The minutes have it too.
Okay, you just said the minutes didn't have the whole thing.
It didn't. It's fine. It didn't say verbatim what it says in our handbook. It's fine.
The minutes, so the thing you suggested in the minutes is what you're suggesting?
Audrey, let's not make it difficult. We're gonna do this at the next meeting.
I'm just trying to decide what the language is.
We'll do it at the next meeting if time allows, because we're gonna have this application. And I believe there's another 2 in the wings.
Suzanne, I'm simply saying the suggestion should be written, so we each have a copy, instead of listening to what you're reading and trying to determine what it is.
Which minutes were you referring to? October 7 or September 26?
It's on the last page of...
Page 3 of September 26 at the top.
Okay, thank you.
Alternate members' participation.
Okay, got it. So that's the verbiage.
So Audrey, if you want to know what it is, it's on there. And then it says, "See your handbook for the explanation." And that's Roman numeral 1, 3. Okay, so let's understand. Let's understand that we might not get to this at the next meeting.
Do we have a workshop on the 21, on 11/21?
No.
It would be tomorrow night if it was on our regular schedule, I think. But I think we're skipping that, right?
We skip into November?
No, not November. November meeting is on the...
We had November 21 crossed off. And we had 12/19 crossed off from our last meeting.
Sarah gave me the dates. I wrote them on my...
I'll have to go back to the minutes or the recording.
She didn't pick it up off of my...
Could I ask a question?
What happened was our November meeting's gonna be on the 18th. And the work session was gonna be like two days later. And so we decided to cancel that one.
So Sarah, what do we have for a work session? Anything?
We didn't. We don't have one?
We don't have one.
For November, December. That's why I thought we were doing it tonight.
So the meeting in November is 18th because of voting.
And I think that's gonna be pretty full. I'm not sure at this time, but it looking that way.
Do you want to do a work session the week before?
I don't know, I don't make...
What day?
The week before. Because the week after is Thanksgiving. Or no, that's the week. Yeah, so that gets really tricky.
So the week before is a holiday, which is why we're not... Which is why we're not doing the regular meeting that day. But we could do the Thursday before, which is the 14th.
When do we vote?
Depending on schedules.
November 5, Suzanne, is voting.
I can't do the 14th.
You can't do the 14th?
You can't meet the 14th?
Kate can't meet the 14th.
I mean, I may have a conflict on the 18th. So that's something I was gonna ask. Who would, if Chuck wanted to take my place for that, taking notes?
We have to have Sabette here.
Well, but I don't want to hold you...
You're gonna be there. Are you around the previous week?
I could come up the previous week, probably.
And I may not be here the 18th either.
You talked about the 13th or 14th for a work session?
We were talking about the 14th for a work session. But if Sabette can't be here, then we can't do it.
She said she can't.
I'll come up for a work session if you need me to.
Well, you know, we don't want you to do that.
I know, that's crazy.
You pick the date.
No, 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 no.
Pick a date for a work session.
This week? What's today, Wednesday? Let's do it tomorrow. I mean, that's fine.
That's crazy.
I know, but I may not be able to come the 18th. I've got a family thing that week, possibly.
But you know what? We need you more on a work session.
7th?
We need you more on a work session.
I don't mind coming up the 13th or the 14th, if there are enough people here to do that.
Are you still here the 7th? Are you gone?
I have another meeting the 7th.
You do, okay, never mind.
I'm here the 7th.
Sarah's not here. So should we plan on the 14th? I don't want to make you come up for that.
I don't want to make you come up either. That's crazy.
I'm here on the 7th.
The 7th, then. Let's do the 7th at 5:30.
I can't come, and I've done a lot of work on this.
You got what?
I cannot be there. I have another meeting that I'd share on the 7th.
What time is the meeting on the 7th?
So what about the day before? What about the 5th, 6th, 8th?
Do we do 5?
I have a meeting on the 5th. I have a meeting on the 7th.
6?
What about the 6th?
Nope.
No, no meeting.
So 5, 6, and 7, you can't be here.
What about the 4th?
I can come on the 6, Suzanne. I can come on Wednesday, yes.
The 6th?
Yes.
I can come on, I'm here on the 6.
Okay.
Right, I mean, but we can meet in the small meeting room. We don't have to have this room.
For a work session. 6 o'clock?
It's the 6th at 5:30? That's when we've been meeting, right?
I'm totally afraid.
No, we've been meeting at 6.
Okay, the 6th is 6.
Okay.
The date is the 6th, the time is the 6th, at 6.
I can't be there, but you don't need me.
11:06 at 6.
Send us a note.
Yeah, send us a note.
I can't make the 6.
But you can send us a note.
So to clarify, it sounds like we're in a good place, except for these two additions. One from you, we want to review the alternates. We want to review what Audrey is taking a look at. Those are our two big pieces. And we got Sarah tonight. Those are really the outstanding things, correct?
Right.
And then it's final and ready to go for approval and review.
Yeah, because Kate's going to...
And Kate's proofing.
Proof it, and then I'm going to give it over to Shawna. And the reason I said to go to your book is because for your edification, you really don't need me to write it all out. It's right there.
But I understand Audrey's point, though. I mean, even if you just make a photocopy of that page of the book?
I'll type it out and send it to you.
Okay.
Let me just get the sequence right. There's stuff coming to you and then to me. Sorry. There's stuff coming to you from Suzanne?
No. I'm sending to her my alternate thing. So it could be a step ahead.
Okay.
She's going to, I hope, put it in what goes to you. You're going to proof it.
Yep.
And then send it out to everybody.
The only thing is, we haven't discussed what you're including. That, nobody's, that, we haven't really, whatever you're suggesting is a change, hasn't been discussed and approved by the group.
It has been discussed so much that it doesn't need to be discussed again. It's a draft. It's a draft.
No, I understand, but am I wrong? Have we approved this draft change?
No, but we haven't approved the draft.
But we don't...
We haven't approved the draft. This is the point of getting to there.
Right, but we haven't approved making that change to put in the draft.
We haven't approved, wait a minute. We have not approved the last document that Sabette sent us. What we're going to do is when we get that final, final draft, is make a motion to approve that draft and ship it out.
So my problem, Suzanne, is that there's wording in there in the section that you want to change, and we haven't, I don't understand what the changes that you're suggesting. So if you put it in there, I won't know what the change was.
Well, can you send this around to us, just that piece on alternates? Just email it around?
Yeah, Suzanne, let me slow down a minute. All right, everything that is currently in the draft, we have all discussed.
Right.
We have all debated, discussed, added, and subtracted. We have not yet discussed Audrey's addition, which she's coming prepared with. What you are looking at with alternates has also not been discussed, debated to go into the draft.
All right, but it was discussed. It was debated, and I remember specifically some members saying, "We don't need to put it in there, because the chairman can make that call." Well, I don't want to, I'm not going to always be the chairman, but currently I don't want to operate that way.
Did we come to a decision about it?
I think it was still proposed. So I'm still not clear as to what it is.
We're going to bring something back to the next meeting that we could hear and discuss free on.
Which I did. It's in the minutes.
Yeah, but we haven't, it's in the minute.
All right, all right. Let's not belabor it. I don't care if it goes in or it doesn't go in. Let's just keep moving on. So the next work meeting will be the 6th at 6:00. I will email to Sabette what I would like to have her put in, some sort of colored type or italics type. I don't care what.
Okay.
Audrey will bring in or send to you what she's got, so that we don't have to schedule another meeting to just do those two things, plus what Sarah pointed out. Put it all in italics or something, what Sarah pointed out, what I'm doing, what Audrey's doing.
Okay.
Send it to Kate. Kate will proof everything, including that, because it may get axed or it may stay. Have her make sure it's right.
Okay.
At our next meeting on the 6th, we will vote to finalize draft number one.
Okay.
Draft number one will go to Shawna. After she looks at it, it will come back to us and with her suggestions. And then we either take them or don't take them, because I want to get this thing to the lawyer. I'd like to get this done by the end of December.
Gotcha. That sounds good.
Sarah?
Okay. I just want to run through these. November 6 is the work session at 6:00 p.m. November 18 is a regular ZBA meeting with a site viewing at 4:30, and then the meeting at 6:00. And December 2 will also have a site viewing at 4:30. And will the meeting on that night also be 6:00 or 7:00?
No. When we adopt, when we adopt this 4:30 site visits, all the meetings until daylight savings goes away will start at 6:00.
Okay. I thought we talked about not adopting that into the...
They're not talking about the rules. She's asking the questions about our schedule.
On the calendar. Okay. So you used the word "adopt," so I got confused. Sorry.
I know. I'm saying we're adopting it tonight as the remainder of our year, going into '25, all during daylight savings.
Okay. Yep.
Thank you, Sarah.
That's okay. I just...
All right, so we are in agreement, because we didn't vote on anything. We're in agreement, site visit at 4:30, meeting start at 6:00.
Yep.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, sounds good.
Okay. Mutually agreed upon. All right, any other questions?
Nope. Nope.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Yes, second. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
I hope you can get some sleep with your dog. Is he keeping you up at night, like going to bed at night?
Are we going to talk about this tonight?
You're not getting any sleep?
It's just not what I expected.